Okay, everybody, we have enough people to start. Seven thirty-one. So with that, I will open up this meeting of the Highland Park Planning Board. It's November seventh, two thousand twenty-four. This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Notice of this meeting was provided to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and the Highland Park Planet on January twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four, and posted on the Borough website at www.hpborough.com and on the bulletin board at Borough Hall, two-two-one South Fifth Avenue, Highland Park, New Jersey, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. Fire exits are to the left and right of chambers. And as always, please remember to speak into your microphone when making your commentary. Roll call, please.
Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Mr. Brusher?
Yes.
Mr. Chin? Ms. Hazy? Mr. Hale?
Here.
Mr. Lynn Harris?
Here.
Mr. White? Mr. Cramman?
Here.
Mr. Stern Cardinal?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Lynch?
Here.
Mr. Prazanza?
Here.
Mr. Koch?
Here.
Thank you so much. All right, well, we'll start with our housekeeping on the minutes for the September twelfth, two thousand twenty-four meeting. Anyone on the board have any comments about the draft minutes? Anybody? I don't have any either. So seeing that, I will solicit our motion to the-
I can make a motion.
Oh, go ahead.
I'm making a motion to an opinion.
Motion by Jeff, anyone?
Second.
Seconded by Alan. I always forget, is this one roll call or all in favor?
All in.
All right, all in favor of adopting the September twelfth, two thousand twenty-four meeting minutes, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any extensions?
Yes.
Extension by Paul?
Also abstaining.
Extension by Dan Stern Cardinal, which still gives us five, so we're still good. Okay, motion passes. With that, we'll go on to the main item of business in our agenda, which is a consistency review. Ordinance number two-four dash two-zero-nine-seven has been referred to us to see if the ordinance is not inconsistent with the master plan, and specifically, it is an ordinance of the Borough Highland Park, Middlesex County, State of New Jersey, amending the downtown redevelopment plan for tracks A through D. So with that, I'll turn the floor over to our planner, who can give us some edification and background on what is in fact being done to amend the redevelopment plan or proposed to be amended.
Good.
Councilman Hale, I'm sure you want to introduce briefly.
Okay. Sure. I just wanted to put a little context that, you know, since we started this whole redevelopment process, we've kind of described it as painting a picture or making a frame. A lot of what we're going to see tonight is more detail on some of the pictures, more specific on the picture, but really it's a repackaging and update of the previous plan to sort of incorporate all of the things that we've passed and done in over the last couple of years. And it also reflects, in particular, sort of changes that we've all approved of track A. It's gotten a lot bigger, it's gotten a lot more specific. But the way that this is written and it's designed, it's so that it's a lot more easy, it's a lot easier to follow. We did a lot of editing and cutting to sort of try and pare it down to the essentials, and hopefully, it's like that. Tonight, we're going to talk a lot about track C, because that's where most of the attention is. But the process that we're going through tonight of amending for A through D, but focusing on track C, is probably one that we're going to see again. Like, we'll make amendments to A or B as they come up, as they sort of come online. But we, Chris and his team, sort of structured this as our hope that this is going to be an easier process for making amendments, which we anticipated, which we want to do as we go forward. There's a lot of things in here, you know, specifically about public benefits, public parking, public space, and sort of make sure that those are placeholders, because we know how important that is. So anyway, it's, I think this is an update, an improvement, a good thing, and I hope we go for it.
Thank you. Sort of general overview of the rest of the presentation. I'll start with kind of recapping what Councilman Hale said along with the purpose of this redevelopment plan. Through a brief description of the redevelopment plan, procedure, and set of requirements, about existing conditions, evolution of the tracks C, you got on there. There is certainly, I think from a public standpoint, what the heck's going on, how this happened, it started in two thousand and five, and a lot of things happened in the past five years alone. Some sort of show the evolution graphically. About the original and refined vision for track C, as well as the actual amendments to the development regulations. So again, starting beginning in two thousand twenty, the Borough initiated a redevelopment planning process to really create a plan to really try to jumpstart development downtown. I think as anyone knows, in our master plan, we recognize not much had happened downtown since two thousand and five. And so we came in, sort of do every need to rehab, destination for the entire town, do some site-specific redevelopment plans. For the downtown area, this is another strategy that began again in two thousand twenty. In two thousand twenty-one, Borough adopted this redevelopment plan, which again, as Councilman Hale indicated, applies to four tracks of land labeled A through D that's currently in place. Following the adoption of the twenty-one plan, the Borough in two thousand twenty-two issued a request for proposals, RFP, with the idea that respondents could really look at the proposed redevelopment plan, and RFP has specific expectations of redevelopment for each track, and allow for RFP respondents to really consider redevelopment within as well as on adjacent property. The idea was want to give flexibility. We want to be, we did not want to be rigid as the two thousand and five plan was. The Borough did receive several respondents' proposals. And in two thousand twenty-three, the Borough selected two conditional redevelopers. They start for track A, the conditional redevelopment is Canton Fidel, they'll look at HP LLC, which is now HP Rare Den Redevelopment LLC. And for track C, Two Thirty-Two Rarean Avenue LLC, also a subsidiary of Garden Homes, the same redevelopment that did Frederick Thirty-One River Road, also through redevelopment. And they, that's sort of a redeveloper for track C. In... After the selection of Garden Homes as the redevelopment, a conditional redevelopment for track C, Garden Homes proposal included properties that went beyond the two thousand and one redevelopment plan. And as such, the Borough Council decided it's appropriate at the time to consider adding additional properties to redevelopment by virtue of a preliminary investigation. This were reviewed, that preliminary investigation was studied. And in two thousand twenty-four, Borough Council, based on the favorable opinion of the planning board, determined that those several additional properties qualify as a non-contamination area redevelopment, thus expanding the footprint of track C. And following that expansion, that allowed the ability of the Borough to work closely with the conditional redevelopment Garden Homes to consider a concept plan in a status of what's happening with the South Bird Pedestrian Plaza. So the Borough held a community meeting in June in a high school cafeteria. It was relatively well-attended, obviously, it was mixed opinions, but from what I felt was seemed like it was relatively positive. And a lot of questions asked, both related to the project as well as impacts of the project, and just general questions about how development works and their impacts to the community. Accordingly, the purpose of this plan really is to amend that two thousand twenty-one plan with the concept plan that was presented with some specific provisions for public benefits, rightsizing some of the land use, height masing, and general design standards. Generally speaking, the Borough recognized that with specific reference to track C being an expanded area, there needed to be an enhanced vision and updated zoning regulations for that larger area, which again allows for a larger building and a series of public benefits that we want to see that you can't do under the underlying zone. I did want to note, as Councilman Hale indicated, that this plan really is a repackaging of the old plan. That's because we want to make it more efficient, so the easier read, the introduction is much shorter, and we organized the existing conditions into one chapter, and the vision and development standards for each track are now together without the existing conditions interspersed in between. So it reads a lot better, it allows for future amendments more efficiently, meaning less time and a little cheaper. But more importantly, there was a enhanced vision and rewrite of the track C area for purposes of this presentation. Just want to note that tracks A, B, and D did not change. Really about that track C. And that's where we're here tonight, we have a presentation, sorry, we have a redevelopment plan before you, it's introduced by council, and as Chairperson Hale indicated, that we are reviewing this redevelopment plan for consistency, or rather, whether or not, whether it is inconsistent, not inconsistent with the master plan. So part of the procedure, it's a typical process to be done over here, the typical presentation that we did. The redevelopment plan is authorized by council, and it is, it can be prepared and then referred to the planning board for consistency review, then goes to second reading. The other option is that the governing body has the planning board free for the redevelopment plan, in which case that satisfies the consistency review, and then you go right to the first reading and then for second reading for adoption. The process that we have elected to use, as we've done with all other redevelopment plans, is the former, which is the Borough Council authorizes the planner to do a redevelopment plan, and it goes to the planning board for consistency review. So it'll be the last side of that flow chart. As to the statutory requirements, that's what is spelled out in the local redevelopment housing law, there's eight components of the law that must be in a redevelopment plan, and that includes, for example, local objectives, the relationship of this plan with local objectives, basically, relationship to the master plan and other features. Proposed land use standard, it could be general, but I think as you can tell, we go through a great effort to provide a lot of detailed information, so it's clear what exactly is proposed. I mean, do spend a lot of time preparing a detailed vision and to get a background. The attempt here is to give a lot of transparency, so this is where we came from, this is what we would like to do, and then we have some detailed standards. And then there's other requirements, such as relationship to the contiguous municipalities, to the county, as well as to the state plan. All the components of the plan are satisfied through the plan, just and incorporate by reference the, this page that's seen on the screen and contained in the redevelopment as part of this presentation. As for the existing conditions, quite simply, it's mainly in a downtown area between South, South and North Second, South and North Third. The tracks A through D are shown on the screen. Track A is on the north side of Raritan Avenue, just west of South North Second. Track B is a couple of homes on the opposite side of track A. Track C is basically a farmers market property and surrounding properties fronting on Raritan Avenue, as well as property that fronts on Magnolia Street and South Third Avenue. And finally, track D is a larger area of land that straddles several properties and also includes part of North Third and some properties on the west side of North Third. The idea at the time, of course, was parking structure, centralized structure, and a community space. And through conversations with the planning board and the public, the decision was to really put that to bed and focus on South Third, where the town tables was. And on the photos on the screen on the right, really are the existing conditions of the track C specific. And you can see there's a mix of uses. There are residential buildings that are converted to office uses, some medical, office, dental, pediatric. There's an existing home on that Willie Street. There is a daycare center and four apartments fronting on South Third, and also a home, a three-bedroom, four-bowl unit that's fronting on South Second, adjacent to the former church. So just to begin for those a little more context. So South, the track C, as you can tell, through the plan, has expanded. I'll go over how that came to be. The existing zoning for track C is quite mixed. And that's partly why we're here tonight, because we want to basically take the twenty-one plan, two thousand twenty-one redevelopment plan, expand it to the entirety of the expanded footprint of track C. Right now, it's NIS containing the two thousand twenty-one redevelopment plan on basically the Borough owned lots with the two thousand and five redevelopment plan adjacent to it, as well as certain property at the corner of Raritan Avenue and South Second. Those are in the CBD zone, Central Business District. There's one property in the PO district, and there's another property in the RAB residential district. So it's a mixed bag of the zoning districts. So as I indicated at the top of the presentation, I did want to explain how the size and shape of track C has evolved over time. In two thousand and five, it was focused on the properties on North, sorry, Raritan Avenue, but did not include the corner lots on South Third and South Second. It did include the Borough owned, basically, the farmers market all the way up to Magnolia Street. In two thousand twenty-one, again, with the strategy of trying to jumpstart redevelopment, the Borough focused on lands that it owned on this particular parcel, because it had, obviously, but the properties that it owns has a greater leverage to be able to consider redevelopment, as opposed to having mixed ownership, you have that similar properties. But the Borough owned properties are in play, it's easier to advertise these properties are available, hence the RFP process. So the two thousand twenty-one plan effectively focused on the Borough owned properties. When, after RFP was issued and response came back from Raritan Avenue, and Raritan Avenue was selected, again, the Borough decided to, well, since you are considering additional lands as was permitted in RFP, let's take the opportunity to consider expanding the redevelopment footprint to these additional areas, primarily because they want to consider secondary access from side streets without having to focus on Raritan Avenue. Because having only sole access on Magnolia Street does create a sort of a pressure point there, which is adjacent to two homes. And the planning board agreed with the study that it does need to never again need a criteria, or need a redevelopment criteria, and the Borough Council adopted it. That definitely meant that redevelopment footprint has to span to all those lots. And this redevelopment plan takes the twenty-one plan, outlined in yellow, and expands it to the majority of that footprint. You'll notice that lots thirty, seventy-eight, thirty-nine are not included in this particular plan, because, after discussions with the Borough Council, it was determined that that area probably needs a separate redevelopment plan because of this relationship to the future plaza. So in terms of the original vision for track C, the primary purpose was, again, bring more people to live, work, and shop downtown. And the idea was that with the Borough owned lots, the narrow part in the center, that would focus on one or more taller mixed-use buildings, which allow for a four-story step-back. The whole, this was determined to be a particularly interesting law, because the way the street then, this could have an opportunity to terminate that view that this, when you drive in either direction of Raritan Avenue, you have an opportunity to create a special landmark building. The connection or walkway from a, what could be a public plaza in Raritan, needed to connect to the parking area in Magnolia. Basically, it was important to maintain that public access as the farmers market does today, from Magnolia to Raritan Avenue. The limited retail frontage was intentional, because we did not want to cannibalize existing retail franchises along the street, already is too much. In fact, there's vacancies, so there was no need to really exacerbate the problem by having more retail frontage. That being said, there's nothing in the plan that stops you from having a retail. This idea was to focus more on ground floor active uses, which could be restaurant space, it could be residential amenity space, workout space, amenities, really trying to fill in that space along Raritan Avenue, making it an active, lively, and comfortable street state. And it didn't allow for apartments on the ground level, but not fronting on the street. So there's some flexibility in the plan and originally to try to really take this to the next step, like jumpstart development. In terms of the master plan, this area, track C, was one of the focus areas, just generally understanding that there's an opportunity to redevelopment here on track C, before even track C was defined, master plan was found in two thousand nineteen. So this is sort of taking that next step, we're analyzing or improving the plan. And one of the strategies of the downtown area specifically calls for considering creating infill redevelopment plans and consider expanding the types of uses on downtown, not just retail, as well as expanding the custom base rates for these businesses, not only on the track, but along the whole downtown area. That's literally meaning we need rooftops, we need apartments downtown, supportive downtown. When we came to considering a concept plan for track C after RFP process, we knew, obviously, with a bigger footprint, we had to change the plan. But we did not want to lose the original focus of track C. It wasn't one of those situations where, oh, someone came in, doesn't matter what it said, we're just going to do whatever we want. It was important to the Borough Council and obviously the planning board that whatever we wanted to do here is maintained. And that was an important effort, an important strategy to really work with the conditional re developer to manage this large footprint. Because what the large footprint means, not only are there opportunities, but there's challenges. You have to really manage the size of the building, really have to manage how we preserve that initial vision, which was allow for pedestrian access between Raritan and Magnolia, having public parking, because there already is sort of public parking right next to the reform church, and having apartments downtown. But don't make it so big that it overtakes the street scape. So it was important for us to maintain that initial vision and manage the bulk regulations and really use this opportunity to get some community benefits. So when we had that June meeting, there were some renderings and plans that were shared, and that was actually incorporated through the redevelopment. We felt that they were very well done. It shows the collaboration between the Borough and the conditional re developer. As part of refining that vision, it was important that even though the underlying zoning allows for a four-story building, it does not look like a four-story building, as one long wall along Raritan Avenue. That is possible under the underlying zone. This redevelopment plan prevents that, because it's allowing for a fifth story, which the twenty-one plan does allow, but can keep it into the center of the project. It allows for a four-story. But you'll notice that part of the building is actually three stories along Raritan Avenue, but stepped back a little because there's residential uses there. So we worked really hard with the conditional redevelopment to make sure this building did not look like one building. In fact, it looks like obviously four, five, or six. It made it look like it was built up over time. As part of that presentation given to the public in that June community meeting, we asked the developer, just give us a sense of what this might look like. So this is existing, and this is a concept. Doesn't mean it's going to look exactly like this, but this was a, an idea of what it might look like. It's trying to pay homage to the existing sort of building with a pitched roof and residential feel scale and some texture. As you get closer to Raritan Avenue, to the center of the block, where the farmers market and Main Street on the Park Building, and as you'll see, that it was carefully designed to make sure that the building, even at five stories, is not the boom moment at all. You'll notice here, it's, it looks like a three-story building for the majority of the footprint, and the five-story portion is decidedly different in terms of scale as well as mass, to make it look like it's a different building. And yeah, it's one building. So in terms of the actual amendments to the plan, in terms of land use, that is the zoning part. One of the comments from the public meetings, that makes sure there's flexibility. I think there are some members of public, rightly so, said, I'm not crazy about this two-story restaurant. Why can't it be flex space or party rental space? We put that into the plan. Do you think that's a good idea? The current permitted uses in the twenty-one plan already allow for flexibility. But when we heard that they want additional uses, including, I'll tell you something, by the planning board in the past, about allowing for preschools, those uses are now in the plan. And really frankly, those are strategies we're going to use going forward, for all redevelopment plans going forward. In terms of the residential uses on the ground floor, they already were allowed, but now we're allowing it on Raritan, but on the limited frontage. We did not want this to be entirely multifamily building on Raritan. The limited frontage is at forty percent max. Given the larger footprint, which includes Lot thirteen and Lot nineteen, Lot nineteen being the single-family house in Magnolia, we want to make clear that that use is a permitted use and can stay a permitted use, and they are not required to be part of the application. If they choose participate in this project, sell a property, and be part of the larger building footprint, that's the last little bit more parting. But-
How did you get Lot nineteen into the plan? Because I remember when they came to meetings way back when, when the Borough bought the back half of one of those really long lots to kind of expand. And they were here and they expressed their concerns at the time. So I'm just curious how Lot nineteen ended up in the plan.
It was part of the two thousand twenty-three investigation. It was, I think, I believe it was determined, fit the criteria, I mean, intersection tree criteria, which it is adjacency or would be, allow for a larger footprint, allow for a larger redevelopment area being more conducive to development. So on its own, it wouldn't meet the criteria, but because it was adjacent to, and that served redevelopment thing to clear. But ultimately, that use, because we had to add that property to the redevelopment plan, we made sure we allow a single family to be in this league plan. In terms of bulk regulations, as we mentioned, we did not want to just simply take the twenty-one plan, which allows for four stories of fifth story step-backs, to simply stretch to the new footprint. We knew we wanted to break down the massing as it gets closer to the word, sorry, South Second Avenue. So five stories are permitted in the current plan, and they are situated generally into the center of the project. If you go through the bulk regulations, you'll notice that there are certain step-back requirements from, say, North Second, we're pushing a fifth story, where it's allowed to make sure it doesn't come all the way towards North Second. And again, requires building these stuff down to three and a half stories as you get closer to North Second. And this, that is less than current redevelopment plan. And for that matter, the CBD, Central Business District. That CBD zone allows for four stories. So this redevelopment plan, it's actually requiring that the height of the building be lower. In terms of the step-back regulations, we wanted to provide for deeper step-backs along Raritan Avenue, so we can accommodate for wider sidewalks, which is needed in downtown. Especially when there's residential uses adjacent to it. We did not want to create a situation where the residents were on top of the street. So it's pushed back with a brownstone style, with stoops. And note, step-back requirement is much deeper than the underlying zone. The CBD and the twenty-one plan, uh, two thousand and five plan for that matter, allows for a zero-foot step-back. This redevelopment plan pushes it back ten, fifteen feet. So trying to manage the form, this is a form-based code. In terms of the step-back in Magnolia, it was then important now it would maintain that deep step-back of Magnolia Street. We did not want this project to move over the residential neighborhood. It keys to two hundred foot step-back. In terms of step-back from Reform Church, the underlying zoning for the CBD allows for a zero-foot step-back. This plan requires a five-foot step-back for the first floor, and you go deeper and you get taller. So it's providing the light and air that you would want between a building and reform church. The current zoning does not require that. Again, staying on the topic of bulk regulations, we maintain building coverage to seventy percent, but we did clarify, as with other plans, like the Buckwitz overlay zoning, that many decks over parking area can't, does not count as building coverage. After all, it's partly just a green roof cover. In terms of impervious covers, maintain ninety percent. We've heard comments, many comments about a concern about how managed rainfall, but keeping the impervious covers to ninety percent, which is permitted under underlying zoning in the CBD and the twelve, two thousand and five, and the two thousand twenty-one plan. We are allowing for additional coverage, if it can only be managed through appropriate strategies, such as green infrastructure. No matter what, the project has to comply with NJDP's on water management standards. In terms of annulment standards, in addition to managing setbacks and height, we added stringent, really, development design standards to require the building be broken up to multiple forms. It must look like it has been built up as several buildings. And in order to enjoy the zoning that's provided for this new plan, it must enter into redevelopment agreement with the Borough Council as redevelopment. Being the concept plan they proposed, if this is adopted, must comport to this plan, and the governing body must be comfortable that it does. So I'm sure I play a role in making sure it does it, yes. Enter into redevelopment agreement, then you go for cycling approval. You'll be seeing this again. In terms of, again, with the building design and street scape standards, we want to ensure that the frontage of the project is designed in a way that is walkable, enjoyable, and safe. I think with a zero-foot step-back, a long, four, a hundred long wall that would be allowed in the underlying zoning without be conducive to creating a nice street scape. In terms of public benefits, this plan requires public open spaces, both indoor and outdoor. It requires it, the underlying zone can't do that. In terms of public parking spaces, this plan requires that public parking spaces be provided to public. Underlying zoning can't do that. And again, with development standards, we are requiring that all curb cuts along Raritan Avenue and North Second, at least the one that's close to the intersection, be removed, but there's adding flexibility where you could put new ones, just as long as you don't put it on Raritan Avenue. You have to have vehicular access from all other streets other than Raritan Avenue. In terms of pedestrian access, on Raritan and Magnolia, that's part of the initial vision for track C, that's being maintained. In fact, we added a requirement, it must be at least twenty feet wide, sort of break up the building masing, but allow for a sort of passageway that should be designed with art, public art, and some landscaping to make that walk from Raritan through a building enjoyable. Again, wider sidewalks with improved street pit, street tree pit construction, as well as additional yard trees, foundation landscaping, all those are required in this redevelopment. And finally, I think as you recognize in all the redevelopment plan rewrite, we have pretty stringent standards for green building, universal design, green infrastructure, and solar management. Those features are in this plan as well. That's it. In terms of the, maybe defining whether it's inconsistent with the master plan, I already gave over that. This really meets the spirit of the, of really downtown strategies for this area, which includes utilizing infill, taller, custom-built infill redevelopment plans, expanding variety of active ground floor uses, expanding downtown resident customer base. expanding variety of active ground floor uses, expanding downtown resident customer base, uh, establishing public gathering spacing. We know, we've been talking about potentially a public plaza on South Third, but this plan actually adds more. So there's a relationship that can be built that makes it a much more enjoyable space. Uh, parking management plan, uh, that was done separately, but in this case, we wanted to manage parking by making sure there's public parking. So in a way, we're achieving that micro bolt into this plan. And of course, um, upgrade any level up, uh, encourage any level upgrade. I think with this plan, with the architecture that you see, uh, working in collaboration with the conditional redevelopment, we're achieving that spiritually designed, but there's still more to do, still more negotiating to go through before we go for site plan approval, assuming that this redevelopment plan is, uh, in terms of the relationship to contiguous municipalities. These areas, Track C through D, including Track C being amended in the center of town. So generally speaking, not incorporate by reference, uh, the talking points in the report, you'll see that because it is in the center of town, and really the modifications to plan is not that significant. Uh, it should have no impact on City New Brunswick, this guy away where it's, going to the county. Uh, they do encourage redevelopment, and they're currently working on their comprehensive plan. We do anticipate that when they do that plan, that our site will be consistent or incorporated into the comprehensive plan account. In terms of the state plan, uh, I was, give me one second. The state plan generally seeks to improve, or rather, I should say, revitalize cities and towns. The, this area, in fact, the entirety of the Holland Park is in the metropolitan planning area, which encourages, uh, using redevelopment to revitalize the cities and towns. So this plan, I feel, is not inconsistent with the local master plan and does not have any impact on contiguous municipalities, the county, and the state plan. And I think as you heard me imply, the underlying zoning actually allows for a project that would not look nearly as good as this, as suggested, yes. Uh, but I would also know that there's some test fits with the underlying zoning. There could be a project significantly larger in terms of the residential density. So we're using this opportunity to sort of manage the design, manage the number of units, which is lower than what could be permitted, and get some community benefits, which includes more public space, public parking, sort of kind of re, keep what's already there, sort of manage parking for customer parking along the street, as well as manage parking for the Reform Church. If that's incorporated in the plan. And, um, I didn't mention this in great, any detail whatsoever, but in terms of formal housing, we're going to defer to the underlying standard, which is must provide formal housing to 15% set aside. That's it.
Okay, just as a reminder for everyone following along at home, because I didn't say it already, the current master plan can be found at the Borough's website at www.hbborough.com if you want to pull that up for your personal review. So with that, do any members of the board have comments?
Could we have the prescribed, uh, throw, uh, it boils it down to something a bit smaller? And when we start this additionally, it'll be helpful.
You mean, you did enjoy reading 100 plus pages?
I did.
I'll certainly do that. I think we've done for all our plans, uh, intended to be favorable, and I'll coordinate with the checkers.
Again, I, I could, well done, Gordon, I did enjoy reading, seriously. So, um, just a couple of things, and, um, I, I, uh, they occurred to me. Uh, a couple, I think it's, um, I think it's A and C, and not D as well, uh, existing park, uh, bus stops. Now, there, there's no, um, there's no bus shelters in any of these, um, but private bank, um, overhang. And this serves as a shelter. I, and I, I think it falls into street furniture, right? But I think bus shelters should be something strongly encouraged in the, because in all these, you now, you know, if you want to encourage people to not drive, you've got, you know, bus service going from New Brunswick right through, uh, American Avenue. So for some of those, if we can, um, it doesn't cost the Borough any money. If you're trying to, we'll provide you the touch, a black shuttle. But it needs to be incorporated in the plans, uh, that the developer needs. So, uh, not move the location of the bus stop, but, but, and, uh, you know, a bus shelter provides, you know. Check from the yellow.
Uh, yes, that point, that actually came up as a comment to the public during the public meeting, which is, what about the bus stop? Um, it's not directly addressing the plan, uh, but it could certainly be addressed through redevelopment agreement. And I think frankly, it's not a huge loss here, right? But I'm sure the redevelopment, people will at least entertain the idea because that would support, uh, the lower apartment corner, as well as the idea of encouraging people who want to live here may not be the same cost. Plus, upgrade of bus shelter and street furniture, if that matters, will bend 15%.
I think if you call their street furniture, you don't have to change the planning, right?
Yes, to be fair, I would say it will happen. But I'm sure we're certainly encouraging through negotiations because it's a bench a lot cheaper than a redo of a bus shelter. But that being said, in the grand scheme of things, it should be not a big deal, but I'll certainly take it hard when we negotiate, uh, well, when Earl Castle continues his negotiations with the, um, conditional redevelopment and before they submit a site plan. Really, what happens, first, they need to enter the redevelopment agreement. So it can certainly be added as a top.
I just, I have one more question now, about really personal A, and then maybe I just, it's been a while. Um, was it always, was it always a phasing approach to, um, A, is because you have the cleaners and sort of along that? Was it always, because I mean, it, it all shows, like, not the whole corridor, just one building, one building, is that?
Which track, eh?
Yeah, okay, which track? Right?
I recall prior, uh, I knew, see that was in the 2021 plan. Was it, uh, doesn't require a phase, but it was anticipated perhaps with these basements, understanding there were always uses, contamination for that matter, uh, that might be difficult to assemble or start a project. It was more of a suggestion because we understood there would be issues that you would build all at once. This plan glosses over that, but it doesn't stop there being a phasing approach. Uh, but I'm sure all those issues would be addressed in a speed of-
It was just there, I just never, I didn't see. And then just one more thing on track, I guess was part of, part 20, that, um, this is part of the memory that was always-
Yes, always on that. Yeah, I believe the, this has portioned out of Lot 20.
Yeah. And then just, just one last question, uh, was related to, I mean, some of these, there's a couple of, um, the whole parcels you mentioned have renters. And so in terms of, um, any sort of relocation assistance, um, is that something that would be, uh, negotiated in the redevelopment agreement?
Uh, I believe so, and that's what any plan, I mean, there's a standard requirement. Uh, here it's under 7.10. Uh, we recognize that there are several residents, and this is in the project area, which means all four tracks, they will be permitted to remain within the project area for foreseeable future, and have, and they have been incorporated to this plan, meaning they're permitted uses. Uh, therefore, it's anticipated that there will be no displacement of either resident requiring a plan. So I think what that potentially means that whatever needs to happen is really a negotiation between the property owner and tenant. Uh, I don't think we would encourage that they be kicked out, so to speak. Uh, and I think in any way that we offer assistance, we would do that.
It's not required under the, the law to assist tenants, is it?
I, I think it is related to, uh, combination or taking property, it would be. But since they are incorporated to the plan, uh, they are allowed to remain. But I, I believe that's a talking point for all both the conditional developers, like how we handle uses, for example, groupers, we work very hard to make sure that they're-
Right. Yeah, I just, you know, the, the rents are, these are, you know, quote, naturally affordable housing. Um, you know, and to lose those, even though you're replacing some of it, you know, because of the housing requirements, you, you know, it's a net, you know, it's not as many as you might think if you are displacing some people. So I just want to just bring that as a, you know, as a point, that there are some renters who, you know.
Yeah, there's some renters, not many. And one of the renters is in the house, this residential house that's managed by the Reform Church, that's an affordable unit. I think critically from a housing plan perspective, for a formal, that needs to be relocated in some way. That's definitely on our list.
Okay.
Quick question B. At one point, we received site applications, uh, and then someone said, it's, it's going to go through redevelopment. Where are we?
Uh, we're in a holding pass to beat because, um, they're in negotiations with others, um, about possibly partnering.
Okay.
So we're in, um, there are, there are several different property owners that are having fruitful discussions.
Okay.
So they're not pushing us and we're not pushing them. Is that fair?
That's fair. And it's also perhaps related or unrelated, the Borough Council authorized, uh, my firm to do investigations on Sanoco Station. Those properties are being in retail strip next to it. So that might play a role in to, uh, help them figure it out. Just a real quick thing, I want to make sure the people that watch this later can see us when I say the blank.
Uh, should I? Sorry.
Have we switched back to, to people?
Yeah, we're so tiny.
There we go. All right, anybody else have comments or questions about the proposal? All right, so I've heard a recommendation, just to point out that bus shelters should be encouraged as part of the street furniture requirements, but not necessarily as a proposed amendment. So other than that, um, I'll solicit a motion, given our discussions, um, that this, uh, ordinance to amend the downtown redevelopment plan for Track C through D. Oh, yes. Oh, wait, I'm sorry, I, before we-
So actually, and they have a note about, um, naturally affordable housing. About retaining, or I don't want to say this, um, uh, you know, sort of encouraging that, um, residents in naturally affordable housing be somehow, you know, not protected, but like, you know, assisted, should they have to?
Yeah, they might assist it in a way any that we can, uh, as well as, I would give them advice or perhaps, uh, direction if they perhaps qualify for affordable housing to be put on the list.
Something like that.
So, uh, a-again, to highlight the, um, challenges that people who are currently living there might face when it comes to displacement and relocation and any resources that might be available to those persons.
Sure, and with that, those two-
Recommendation for-
This is just two.
And this is, should, yes, this is true. Um, I made a motion that-
Oh, yeah, before you do, I have to formally open up the meeting to the public for commentary on tonight's presentation. But seeing no members of the public present tonight, I will close the public portion of comment. And now I will solicit a motion.
I made a motion that, uh, this, uh, proposed, uh, reform plan is not inconsistent with the-
Make my heart beat. Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, I'll take it from Dan because I heard him first. Um, all right, then we'll take a roll call on the vote, please. Mr. Brusher?
Yes.
Mr. Hale?
Yes.
Mr. Linares?
Yes.
Mr. Pearlman?
Yes.
Mr. Cornell?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Hahn?
Yes.
Okay, everybody, last, uh, anyone have any general comments or anything not on our agenda tonight? You want to talk about? Questions, comments, updates? No? All right, I'm going to open up the meeting to the public once again for any items not on our agenda. Still seeing no one from the public has joined us in the last 60 seconds. So there's a public portion of the meeting. Um, I guess we should ask Scott if there's anything else going on, since you aren't still on the agenda. If there's any updates.
No, just a couple, I mean, couples of applications and permits for some additions. That's about it.
As long as improvements continue to flourish, all right? All right, then, so I'll solicit a motion to adjourn.
We can do adjourn, thank you.
All in favor? Thank you, everybody, much appreciated, as always.